Can I call this regular workshop meeting of the Jacksonville City Council order? The council, you have before you a copy of the proposed agenda for the next meeting. And I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
A motion and seconding for discussion. Here now in favor of Senate 5, Senate 8.
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have the adoption of amendments from the January 21st, 2025, regular meeting on four dissent items.
Your approval for adoption. Second.
Any discussion here now in favor of Senate 5, Senate 8.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. So we go down to number six here, and this is a sports and events complex update. Anthony, if you would introduce your guests that you have with you tonight, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I have with me Tessa Romanowski with LS3P and Associates. She is part of our overall project team. She's the building architect, or one of them, actually. And then I also have Jason Galloway, which you met several, well, more than several months ago, almost a year ago at this point, who is the lead on our McAdams team, and he is our prime landscape architect. So tonight, we just want to give you an update on where we are. As you recall, last year, we talked about the master plan, and there was good enthusiasm behind the mixed use concept, the sports and the recreation, and, you know, the mixed use commercial as well. But we've spent many, many hours working with Tessa and Jason and their team since the last meeting to come up with what I think is a really great concept. And that's really just where we are at this point. We're in a concept plan for the building itself. We want to show that concept to you, get your feedback on it, and that will allow us to make the decision as to whether or not we're ready to move forward to schematic design, or whether we need to make some adjustments. Because of the concept design, we've also had to make some adjustments to our master plan. So Jason's going to go through that here in just a minute. Hopefully, you're just as excited as I am, because this has been a great team effort with the McAdams team, as well as all of the staff that have spent lots of time working on it. So, Tessa, if you would.
Thank you all for having us here. We're really excited to show you where we are in the process. I've brought a few slides that I've combined with Jason here, and so we'll take turns going through architecture and then the master plan updates, respectively.
Just hit the right button.
Oh.
There you go.
Okay. So I just wanted to put an agenda up here, just to kind of let you know the main topics that we'll be discussing. I'll do a quick introduction that encompasses sort of our project success factors that we compiled. We'll get into the sports and events center concept floor plans. I'll run through the program elements with you, and then I'll hand it over to Jason for the master plan. And I believe Anthony will bring us home with the schedule and just any Q and A or discussion items that you want to bring up. So as an owner and design team, we spent lots of hours together over the course of the last two years honing and refining the purpose, the mission, and the vision for this facility and this complex. So ultimately, we came up with the following project success factors. So we put these down in paper, and we continually look back at them and kind of measure our progress against these five factors. They are enabling the athletes to perform at a high level, designing a venue that tournament operators want to return to, creating memorable experiences for families and guests, some building that has a smooth, functional back of house, and a place that has flexible spaces and recognizes community partners, which we know will be important to the future of So we went on many site visits in the very beginning as we were gathering data to existing facilities in the region. We spoke to their facilities managers and looked at multiple case studies. And through this preparation, we compiled data that gave us best practices and lessons learned from others to incorporate into our design. Once it was time to start drawing, we studied different concept arrangements of the major building components and overlaid them on the site plan to kind of see what would work in the big picture. And once it was time to start drawing, we studied different arrangements of rooms and adjacency studies, we call them. So as you can see up there in the overall concept, it's comprised of a court volume, which is on the north, page north, a conference center on page south, and it's connected by an atrium. Let me see if I can point at that with this. An atrium and, can you see that? Okay. Yeah, this atrium and lobby space right here. So it's basically kind of a C shape that creates a really nice entry plaza for the arrival and welcome of guests and spectators and athletes. And then in the back, it allows us to create this really nice green space, outdoor programming space courtyard, that would be used for things such as outdoor events and movie nights.
Before you leave, Matt, if you don't mind, one thing, you know, Tessa mentioned that we went on the roadshow, and we heard from lots of experts who are already in the field operating these types of venues. I know you probably can't see the detail very well here, but we're going to zoom in, and we're going to see some more specifics. But before we do that, I want to describe to you what we call independent utility. Okay? What we heard time after time after time is that when you design a facility like this and you want to operate it, you don't want to have to open the entire building, right? To just use pieces of it. So this C shape that she's describing to you, we have the sports half that's basically on page north there, the largest part of the building, and connected by the atrium and the admin space. And then below, we have more of what's going to be the conference or the meeting space that we were looking to include. So there is independent utility, meaning if you just want to have sports, you don't have to open up the conference facility. If you want to have conferences, you don't have to open up the sports facility. That helps a lot with overall operating cost and overhead. So, you know, we did learn a lot of stuff on the roadshow, talking to our peers.
Right. And I will get into a little bit more of how we propose to kind of section off or create different zones of the building as we get into some of the enlarged plans. So what you're viewing now, as you can probably tell, is the sport court space. We have capacity for eight high school-sized basketball courts that can be converted into 16 high school regulation volleyball courts. So the way this is shown, just for graphic purposes right now, is that what you see on the left side is only eight volleyball courts and four basketball courts, but the side on the right can also be configured just like the side on the left. But what I'm showing on Plan East has been designed to be transformed into the event centerpiece with the ability to host championship and college-level games, graduations, and concerts. This is what we are, in this area, I'm sorry, I keep grabbing the wrong thing. In this area down here, we're calling this the Great Hall. And what that is, is as you come in, the main entry, and go to the right, you enter into this sort of concourse, as we're calling it, which would house like concession stands, the restrooms, storage, and also places for like vendors to set up, and people having places to sit down and eat as well as outside the area adjacent to the green space. One other thing I wanted to point out is that we have designated a possibility of adding mezzanines to the upper level above the marketplaces, the concession areas, for mechanical mezzanines and places to store equipment like that. If you look to the, all the way to the north, on the Plan East side, we have a couple of locker rooms, some flexible spaces that could be used for first aid, coaches' room, training rooms, a media room. And then you'll see three gray rooms that are designated as storage. And we've done extensive research and looked at a lot of different studies and specifications to figure out exactly how we can store all of the equipment that will be needed for these court spaces, such as the mobile basketball goals, the volleyball goals and nets, and spectator chair seat storage, and then court floor storage, if that's the route that we end up taking for the championship court. We also have a loading dock, which is most likely going to be uncovered and just kind of more of a loading platform for deliveries into the court space. Moving to the south side of the building, we want to kind of focus your attention on the main entry and then the conference center. And then I'll get into more detail on the conference center in the following slide. That will give you some more insights into all the planning that's gone into those. But what we've got here is the lobby space, and we envisioned this being a really nice place to enter off of an entry plaza that would have a lot of like, some hardscape, but a lot of softscape too, to create this real welcoming experience. One idea we were discussing was having it be kind of this jewel box or kind of a glass entry, and have the ability to have this wall on the backside that's adjacent to the admin center be kind of this graphic branding moment for people when they walk in or when they drive by, being able to look through that front facade and see this amazing graphic that either is illustrating like the character of the Sports and Events Center, or maybe a sponsor, or something of the like. But something that really creates this welcoming, impactful entry. And you'll see a reception desk and kind of a will-call ticket office for folks that might need to take care of some ticketing business when they get there. And we have intentionally slid that over to sort of the south side so that we can take advantage of this nice wall space here. And you'll see there's some direct access into the admin from the reception for security purposes. And then we've located some toilets here, not only for use of the admin, but when the whole building might be shut down and there might be an outdoor event going on in the back courtyard, there would be access from the outside to get into some restroom facilities.
I seen a catering kitchen there, is that what that is?
That's right. Yeah. A catering kitchen for use by the people that come in and serve the conference rooms.
And if I could, that's deliberate, because when we talk to our peers about what type of kitchen facilities they recommended, there's a lot of infrastructure and cost associated with having a full service kitchen, right? But when we're talking about meetings, conferences, and the like, most of those will bring in catering from outside. And really, all we're trying to do there is to give them an area to help finalize that preparation before you actually bring it and serve it. So we're not making meals there, we're not baking cakes, we're really just having it as an entry point to then serve it to the patrons.
So going in a little bit closer, what we did was design three large conference spaces, and as you can see over to the right here, three smaller meeting rooms, D, E, and F. And all of this whole entire space is subdivided by movable partitions, so that you have the, you know, ultimate flexibility in terms of how you configure these spaces, and with the option to completely open this all the way up, or to subdivide it, as we've shown here with the different letters, designating the different rooms. What else I want to point out about this is that we've illustrated here the different seating arrangements, or the different ways you could configure each of the rooms, from anything from like banquet style, to like seminar style, to workshop, to boardroom. And we also based the occupancy of these spaces on what we were told is a very important event here in Jacksonville, being the Marine Ball. So we've made sure that we were able to accommodate all of that, and, you know, you could even have weddings here. A couple of things I want to point out here is we have this southern entry portal right here that is, allows people coming in from a parking lot just to the south, which Jason will probably be able to show you on his slides, and give it people easy access into the conference center when, you know, it's only a conference going on and no sports. And then this big wall right here gives us the opportunity for another one of those graphic wall moments that would then kind of speak the same language as what we're proposing to put in the main entry off the entry plaza. So we started to establish a vocabulary of wayfinding and make it easy for folks to know which ways into the building. Another thing I want to point out here is we talked about the zones a little bit ago, and we have proposed and designed in overhead doors to sort of help compartmentalize the different sections so that you can throw them open and have a nice wide aperture for folks to come in, because a lot of times these events will have a lot of folks coming in and attending them. But it also, during the off-peak hours, you can keep those closed for, you know, maximum efficiency with your mechanical and electrical and heating and cooling. And we've added these swing pedestrian doors so that staff can come and go with ease throughout the off-peak times.
Those roll-up doors is what gives us the independent utility that I mentioned before. When they're closed, you can basically just shut down the whole opposite side of the building. And when it's open, then you have pre-flow movement, whether you're going to the sports area, or whether you're going to the conference area. So really innovative design there.
And then I just want to point out that the blue zone is what we're calling the pre-function space. So this is kind of the area that when you come in for a conference, you know, you might see a table set up here, and you'd pick up your name tag, and then you'd go around here, and there would probably be coffee cart set up, or other vendors that are associated with whatever the convention might be. And there's some direct access to and from the outdoor green space directly through, and we envision this to be a nice kind of transparent wall, so you'd get views out to the green space from in the pre-function space. We've also provided for a nice back-of-house corridor that will allow staff serving and accommodating these individual rooms to be able to come and go with ease. We've done the same kind of extensive study on the storage for this one as we did for the court storage, with making sure that all of these tables and chairs can fit nicely on carts and be rolled into the storage rooms. We also have a separate loading dock just for the conference center as well.
Where are the bathroom facilities for those conference?
Oh, sorry. Ah, sorry.
Is the, yeah, there you go. Backwards.
Sorry about that.
What would be the seating capacity for the major basketball game or something?
The seating capacity would be somewhere between 3,000 and 4,000. So the other aspect of that too, and the reason why we feel that that configuration is so important, is because we talk about concerts all the time. We also talk about graduations. How many graduations are you familiar with? They get rained out, and only two people get to go. You know, this is a situation where we could have those graduations indoors, regardless of the weather conditions. Really, that whole sports event side gives us tons of flexibility to do lots and lots of things.
Did you happen to tour the, I think, New Bern has a new complex?
No, so we didn't, we did not go to New Bern, but we went to Myrtle Beach. Where did we go?
Rocky Mountain.
Rocky Mountain.
Greenville.
Greenville.
And Wilmington. We looked at, my book.
We got enough.
I saw on television.
Yes.
They included a.
We've sized them.
A running track suspended above the.
It's open to rec center.
Pardon?
They did just open a recreation center.
Recreation center.
Hurricane Florence, yes, sir.
Which is kind of neat, above the perimeter of the basketball courts and other courts, there's a running track.
So we talked about that, both with our design team, as well as our consultant, who helped us do the feasibility study, you know, the sports and tournaments feasibility study. The challenge with the overhead running track is that it interferes with basketball as well as volleyball. So that cantilever track really kind of impacts the height that you're able to play some of those sports. That's why we didn't include it here, and it was something that Brian Connolly with Victus, our contractor, he really advised against.
It would also create an acoustical nightmare if you're having a concert or other, kind of showing there where there's a lot of amplification sound that would create wackadoodle echoes off, you know, reverb would be terrible.
Any other questions on this? I was just going to move on, because I know that I might be getting close to time.
We want to make sure that you understand clearly kind of what we're putting forward here. Again, it's one building that functions essentially as two. So we have the sports facility that can, that has tons of flexibility. That's another space that we would be able to configure in many different ways. We'd be able to subdivide it. We're thinking something very similar to what Rocky Mountain has, where there's actually an acoustical curtain that comes down in the middle, so you could have multiple military balls going on on either side, or whatever the events may be. The other thing too is, is that we're talking about being able to play volleyball, basketball, a number of different things indoors, which I know Susan's very excited about. I know Scott Smith is very excited about, without having to worry about weather, without having to worry about being too overcrowded, and having people scattered, you know, at all the different middle schools and high schools in order to hold the tournament. The conference facility, we really feel that we right-sized based upon what the events are that we think that we could host, specifically some of the smaller military balls and conferences. And really, it's pretty much spot-on what was developed in Greenville at their newest student center, which is very successful. We've been there to a number of events. So it's just, we feel that it's a great concept, and just would like to get some feedback from you on what you're looking at here.
Mr. Ward did ask about the restrooms. When you look at the bottom, Tessa's comment was, they've been sized based on the calculations. So we look at the maximum calculations of the, basically of occupancy, and that's where we go with restroom sizing. You'll see that on the athletic side. You recognize it looks like three different restroom facilities. And then you come down to the conference side, and you see the two main restroom facilities, they're a little larger, so that gives us the number that we would need to have the larger side of the conference.
I have two questions. One, so that entry, I forget what you called it right there, is that whole area going to be covered outside?
Down at the south end here.
Or is that the entrance or the rear?
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah, that big area, where's this entrance? Yeah, is that whole area?
Oh, no, this is, this would be outdoor plaza space. And as you'll see in the master plan slides, there's kind of a drop-off for.
But it's all covered?
Well, the, we haven't actually, you know, formalized anything yet, but we envisioned this to be covered enclosed space, but, and there might be some sort of, you know, canopy that projects out, you know, over that.
I think personally they're going to have the whole thing covered for a reason. If you have that many people coming in, it's pouring down rain or bad weather, I mean, you're not, and you've got people in and out, especially tournaments, something about when you have people, the teams meeting up, that's a lot of in and out traffic in that area.
And that's how that pre-function area operates. So the length of that pre-function area and the entrance into the lobby, it's designed, as Anthony was saying earlier, so that people can come in, get into that area, move in quickly, then move into the great hall area. So the way that that outside would be set up is similar to what you see at the RBC, whatever the Carolina Hurricanes is now, it's a non-covered area, where they don't let people in. Our difference is, we would have people come in and use the inside area, because the way it's designed, that can house a lot of people, and then the goal would be to move them through into the great hall to use that space, because it's sized to be able to hold the people. But potentially, as Tessa was saying, as we get into the final plans, if that's something where we look at the covering, that would be something that we would go into with the other.
Well, they do have a large covered area, not all the entrances, but there is a big one at the front. And the other thing I was looking at, is there an area like for security, a lot of these big events, you're going to have metal detectors and whatnot, are you going to have room for all that type of stuff?
Yes.
I don't know how big like square footage wise that lobby is, I was just looking at a square, but I just didn't know if you're going to have room for all that.
Yeah, the lobby's somewhere around 3,500 square feet, but if you think about how it connects, can you go to the overall?
Sure.
You know, when we talked about security, you know, before people actually go into the sports area, right there, that roll-up door key, point to it, Tessa?
Yeah, I am. I think.
That's an area where you would set up your security, so that you can get people in, out of the rain, but before you let them into the event, you know, they would have to pass security. And as far as the comment on coverings, you know, basically canopies, personally, I'm a huge fan of that, because I know how it is around here when you're trying to get in the door, and you're holding the door for your family, and you've got 15 people streaming in behind you. So I could definitely see a covering there, probably not the extent of the whole plaza, but like Mr. Ray was saying, we do want to have space to get people in, out of the rain. So all of that blue area, particularly on the conference side, we could stage tons of people in there waiting to get through security. And then one of the key things that we learned in Myrtle Beach was that great hall area. Okay? They did not have that. So what happens is, people get their ticket, they go in the door, and then they just get stuck. Okay? So the intent is to provide enough space for people to be able to disperse. And if you look at, can you go to where it zooms in on just the sports area? One of the innovations that we're trying to include here is what we call the marketplace. Okay? This is not a typical hot dog nacho stand type of arrangement. Modern sports facilities are moving more into basically a grab-and-go kind of thing. Okay? So the intent is to put those in areas where we can lure people away from just getting logjammed at the front door. Same thing with the restrooms, and get them to kind of disperse and go to where they need to go without holding everybody else up.
Go back to my restroom comment. If my wife tells me that the bathrooms are full, there are not enough restrooms, I don't want, I don't want to say I'm sorry.
Well, we know.
I'll say that one more time, sorry. But we still.
Female toilets are, need to be twice as many as male.
Well, this is, you know, we're at the concept phase right now. You know, one of the things that Tessa and her team are going to do is, as we move into schematic phase, if you like what we're showing you here, that's what we're going to do next. The process is going to accelerate, and part of that process is really honing in on what the actual square footages are going to be. So we may end up expanding them, we may end up increasing the number of restrooms, but you're exactly right.
Just making, I'm trying to give you my feedback here.
No, it's good.
That's exactly what we need, because your wife's not the only one that's going to have that feeling if it's not.
Yeah.
When you have, you have an event, and it gets over, like if you're in the arena, and it gets, you have a halftime, everybody makes a rush.
Right.
So.
Would you have alcohol sales? Like a bar area, because I'm thinking if you have a concert, people are going to want to have a drink. I mean, are you going to have a dedicated bar area, or just have it be part of the marketplace as well, you're going to have it piggyback off of different types of?
The great hall is intended to give us that flexibility. Okay? So you won't have like a fixed bar setup, if you will, but depending on what the event is, you could set up a whole number of different things in that area, whether you're selling merchandise, or, you know, whatever, whether it be alcohol, it really depends on the event. So that's why there's so much space dedicated to just being open right now, because what we don't know is what we don't know. And of course, as we hire on a management company, they'll be able to advise us more specifically on how to set that stuff up, and it's a lot easier if the space is open and flexible.
One thing we also. One thing we also wanted to consider in the great hall is some of the places that we visited had like little game centers or little arcade games for like the little brother or little sister that's tagging along and needs some kind of entertainment while they're waiting or whatever. And then we also envisioned this back green space to be a place where they can just kind of run around with supervision, you know, in between games and get some fresh air and stuff like that. So that great hall has lots of flexibility and lots of space for all kinds of things to program into it.
I'm sorry, Dr. Ward.
I was about to ask, is there anything being considered top-level patio spacing, like rooftop, anything of that nature?
Well, at this point, the only thing on the rooftop would be the mechanical equipment. However, you know, as we get into a higher level of detailed design, you know, we could look at that stuff. The challenge is if you start putting people on a second level, then you have to provide elevators and all types, all kinds of things that drive up the cost. If it's something that we can work in the budget, it's definitely something that we have talked about, particularly for overlooking the sports, right? And making sure that we have plenty of space for people to be able to observe, but not on the court, if you will. So, question is, or the answer is maybe.
And part of the design for the Uptown complex is for the buildings that build outside of the facility to have that flexible option so that they can incorporate, maybe it's an entertainment center, maybe it's the, maybe it's a rooftop bar, maybe it is the mixed use that Anthony was talking about earlier, so that it allows some more flexibility for that design. So when we look at the plan unit development, we want to consider how that impacts the overall layout of the facility so that it has that flexibility. And it's different because we don't have that option now. We hate to miss out on some fun, exciting avenue here in this complex.
Absolutely.
If we can go back to the overall, I'd just like to make one more point before we move on. The C shape is intentional, so the darker green area is intended to be what we call a courtyard. It's inside the secure area of the facility, but it's outside. So these are areas where we're thinking we could have, you know, various amenities for people to hang out, eat, you know, you might have, you know, who knows what out there. The thought is too, that if we need to supplement the food for, whether it's, you know, a conference or a sporting event, we could have food trucks or vendors come in and use that outdoor space to provide, to provide that to the patrons.
I appreciate the flexibility, my feedback. This is incredibly flexible. You guys have obviously done a really good job and do your homework and make sure that this really can be multipurpose. Sports is gonna be, you know, huge, but there's, the building is not just limited to athletic use.
That's right.
That's huge for our community. Just for kicks and giggles, for those of us in the public and those of us in the room, if you were to pick up the Jacksonville Commons and overlay it over this, how many of those would fit in there? Give us a scale or a fraction, can you?
The building?
Yeah, like...
Michael, you know how many? Susan, you know how many square feet?
Can you, like ballpark it as those square feet remain?
It's probably what, 30,000 square feet?
It might be more than that, but I mean, you figure we only have, you know, so many basketball courts, and right here we have eight. So it's only gonna fit probably half of that gym space right now.
If you think about the gym space...
It's four from across the top.
Probably.
Well, if you think about the gym space, you would only have those two courts. So take one quarter of the courts on the left, that's what you have in the main commons.
In the main commons.
Just to turn...
That's just a good reference for those of us who are familiar with the commons and are looking at a piece of paper with, you know...
That's a very good point.
That floor space that you see on the top is about 80,000 square feet of floor space. That's the play space. And so whatever the commons is...
No more than 20,000.
Yeah.
So it's even, I mean, total floor space, and that's the outside perimeter as well.
Speaking of square footage...
To give you a visual of what you're working with.
Yeah, we've got, we've got over 80,000, almost 90,000.
Almost 90,000.
Almost 90,000 square feet just in the courts.
Sports.
Yeah.
And remember, that was strategic because of our market analysis, what Victus told us would be successful, meet our local needs, meet our regional tournament needs, and so we're holding to that. The overall program that he talked about was 125,000 square feet, but that was just for sports, okay? Right now, we're at 159,000 square feet. That includes all of the meeting space. And before we go any further, we're going to get it down to 150. That's our goal, and that's Tessa's challenge.
On the courts, we designed, I know we're using them for all different events and all that kind of stuff, how do you, maybe you're getting interested, how do you make it where the lines are not so busy? Like you go to some of these places, they got so much stuff going there, like who knows those kids know what's out is bound and what's not? If you're trying to pickleball, volleyball, basketball, all these different things on one court, is there an easier way to do it besides that?
That's part of the dialogue now. But the goal is you have separate floors. So, and the secondary comment is you don't have all of these uses in there. So if we have a floor that is set up for volleyball, like what Tessa's showing us here on the left, we don't allow people to come in here and put down tape and say, this is what a pickleball court's gonna look like? Pickleball's played somewhere else. So we have courts, we have a main floor, and then you bring in the playing surface that is just basketball, that is just volleyball. And that's why the storage matters so much because not only do you have the nets and the goals, you also have the floor surface that has to go somewhere unless you think you're gonna have a multipurpose type of floor. We've seen in some of these larger facilities, whether it's Charleston or Charlotte, they have a concrete floor and then they bring in a floor material for each sport. We're gonna have something similar here so that you don't have that confusion. Can't have tournament play on confusing court spaces.
Correct. So you go to Jack's, the place is great, don't get me wrong, but there's a lot going on with the lines.
34 different sports lines.
Some plays basketball there, those kids are lost constantly.
Definitely the Swiss Army knife.
Yeah, I mean, I understand why you had to do it, I'm not picking on you, but I'm just curious about that. And going back, like pickleball's a huge thing, I mean, I hope that's part of the, I mean, that's growing and growing as far as popularity goes, a lot of big tournaments involved.
There are many flooring options. We really haven't narrowed them down yet.
Can you add on as time goes on? Like let's say you just did volleyball, basketball to get started, you know, because of cost, but then down the road, if you wanted to add pickleball or whatever, really?
Yeah, think about cheerleading, think about dance, think about wrestling, all those things are options on inside space, and they come with their own mats, they come with a different layout.
Take those out, just if concrete...
Think about completely, you think about the Hurricanes versus NC State, they come in there and they can play ice hockey in a rink where they're playing basketball the next day.
Well, like Saturday, they played at, they play at 1:30 for, they play basketball at 1:30, they had a hockey game at 7 o'clock at night.
Tessa's teams let us do that discussion and conversation about how do you have to manage that concept? So then when, like Anthony talks about, we have to bring in the management company, so then they tell us, what are the expenses gonna be to switch from basketball over to hockey or vice versa? We're not inviting hockey into our facility at this point, but if all of a sudden...
Yeah, I was getting ready to say, we're not committing to an ice rink.
Wonder how long our facility is gonna take to change over to that?
Well, that's something that we have to consider. So not only the capital cost of whatever the floor is, but also the...
Labor cost of maybe changing.
Yeah, there is labor cost associated with that.
Yeah, I know there probably, there's bleachers, don't they have automated bleachers where they'll come in and out as far as the big area? Where there'd just be big walls if you don't need the stadium seating?
The way they're laid out now, they're basically push into the wall, you know, whether they're automated or whether they're manual, that depends on cost. But that's the intent right now is to have them push away so that you can have a completely clear space.
So yeah, like these three sides, the north, east, and south would be permanently anchored to the wall, telescoping bleachers. And then this one here would have to be something that we've, we've talked about the idea of that being a rentable, bring it in for a specific event because this dotted line right here is actually one of those curtains, those sport curtains, that will be pulled back some, some of the time and not in use. So we can't anchor anything to it right there, especially if we've got the setup like we do on the left mirrored over here on the right, which would probably be most of the time, I would think.
Of course, if we had a concert or a graduation where that removable set of bleachers is, that's where the stadium is.
That's right. And then you fill chairs within on the floor.
So back to that question, back to Mr. Bender's ad over here, this 3,500 people that could be in there could include floor space and the bleachers, and then this removable area for the, for the stage or for the, for the concert stage just gives us that flexibility. But you have to remember, what you see on the left can be replicated on the right so that we can have all eight basketball goals or all 16 volleyball courts for those tournaments. And you'll see that same layout in Rocky Mount. So if you had that opportunity to go check it out, I would just encourage you just to see it, how the layout works.
Something that'd be kind of neat, like during, as a tournament progresses, you have Thursday through Saturday, you have all those courts open, there's a lot more play, and then say comes Sunday when it's championship time, you could turn that into like the main championship court, so.
And this is also an opportunity for us to split local recreation as well as tournament play, if at all possible, just by having that subdivision. So again, I can't impress upon you enough that we learned so much on our travels and it's all integrated here, and this is a very flexible, very flexible concept.
Do you have an idea what the outside will look like at this point?
Beautiful.
Just don't make it look like a U-Haul.
It's not going to look like a U-Haul.
No. It's gonna be red.
What bright red are you wearing?
So one of the things that we do know is that given the site layout and where we have the building, we are going to be able to take advantage of a lot of passive lighting. So there's probably gonna be high-level glass, not ground level because, you know, you don't want that on your playing courts, but it'll be high-level glass, it'll be a slope roof because we don't like flat roofs for many reasons. But then the other thing, if you can go back to the overhead, the whole thing, what we were very cognizant of is that we didn't want this to look like a shopping mall, okay? So you see there's a lot of variation in the frontage of the building. There's also going to be variation in scale. So when you look at the conference center, it's not going to be nearly as tall, right, as the sports playing area because you need that vertical height. So we're gonna get variation along the front as well as elevation variation, so it has a really attractive look when we're done.
Graphic walls will help with that too, identifying the nature of the space.
That's right. Yeah. So that's the next, the next step in all of this. If you all are happy with where we're at, then starting to develop the exterior and take it vertical, which, you know, as architects, we constantly are thinking in those terms anyway as we're laying this out and getting ideas of massing and scale and proportion. But we are assembling case studies and we're gonna look at a lot of great examples and already have with, with the building committee as well to get input and, and start to transform it into, you know, the Z-axis to get it, get it...
Vertical.
Vertical, yeah.
Well, it was good, I mean, my question is, I mean, I'll see you're not gonna let us answer, but what ballpark of money are we talking about? I mean, are we talking 20, 50, like?
Well, under...
Yes.
Potentially between, let's say 40 and 80.
That's fair enough.
Without any estimates?
Yeah, I mean, I understand, I just didn't, I was just shooting from the hip.
What we're looking at, when Anthony talks about the 150,000 square feet, what we've said is that number based on industry standard right now and estimates puts us in a ballpark that we've talked before, but some of these, when we actually get estimates when the plans are finalized, then we'll be able to see what the open space is versus what the active space is. So between heating and managing the overall facility, some's active, some space is not.
We're driving towards the lower end of that.
So you're going up in the middle?
We're driving hard.
That's yet to be seen, but we are scaling back the footprint and we're trying to be as intelligent as we can with the dollar.
Well, I think we need to be conservative, but we also don't want to skip and regret things, you know, the, things that you can't go back and do down the road, so.
This is a one-time deal.
Yeah. But we also don't want to break the bank at the same time.
All right.
Anthony, one quick question before...
Uh huh.
Give me some capacities again on your...
On...
Occupancy?
Okay, so really what we're, what we're designing the whole thing for is about 3,000 to 4,000 people, okay? So when you're having a concert, we would be able to seat those on the right side of that sports floor where you have the stadium seating, okay? When you have sports events, people are much more spread out. And so we're still looking at that same number and, but there'll be further, you know, in more places of the building. When you look at the conference side of things, the capacity is much lower. I think we were around 600, was it?
But we actually have about 750 to 1,000 based on the seating capacity, but that would, that's the high end.
That maxes everything out. I mean, that's a situation where we'd have to rent chairs and really just max out the total capacity of that area. So total max is about 4,000 and then probably as low as, you know, 700, 1,000.
So, and we included the occupancies based on the different arrangements, if that helps anybody kind of visualize it.
But at the same time, if you look at meeting space E, what does that say, 25?
Right, but that's in that configuration around commons.
If you have it in that configuration, you can host a meeting as small as 25 people. So again, there's just flexibility all over this place, and it's all about how we set it up.
It's a typical attendance at a Marine, a typical Marine Corps ball.
What they were telling us max is around, what, 600, something like that? So in that event, we would be looking at the much larger space because it's not just people sitting down and looking forward, right? There's a dance floor, there's, yeah, you know, there's food being served, so that's something that would happen in the sports area, and that's why that curtain is so important.
Is it worth to have those three smaller ones and just get rid of that and just have four larger sections that beat up that way? Because I mean, we have so many conference rooms around, you know, smaller ones that fit that size, where just have four bigger ones and you can just...
The flexibility on this is when you go into a conference and you need those smaller breakout rooms. If you think about, like, if you think about elite conferences, you may have smaller regional conference, and then you'd go in here and say, there are 30 people in these rooms, and then there's some of the larger sessions. Smaller sessions and larger sessions, what Tessa shows us with the dotted lines, those are all removable walls. So as you said, you could theoretically have four larger areas, and then back to the mayor's comment, if we have the larger ball and then we pick up two small balls over here, then you could break these areas into, maybe that's a 50 and 100, and then there's the 600. So theoretically, in the same building on the same night, you could have three different Marine Corps balls that are happening at this facility that have, that accommodate different numbers. So I think that's what you get with these removable walls is you can flex the space for the different numbers of people. And that's what we were trying to do, mayors, give us that utility and that flexibility.
Hopefully we'll be able to host elite conferences here.
You know, I think the east side...
Absolutely, that would fit in this.
Yeah, if you think about the numbers here, Mayor, we could easily, and the facilities we're seeing, we could make it happen. That's for our, our thought process is that's probably the largest we would see based on their numbers. So we think about a lot of the metro mayors, the chiefs association, the managers, the attorneys, we think about those size conferences so we could bring people into this area. That would be our, our ideal for the year, but yeah, just you think about, there's the east and the west type of meetings, we could take the east and partner between Wilmington and New Bern and maybe even Greenville, and then we would have a rotation that gives them something else.
All of that could easily fit in this space, right?
Well, I think Greenville's got this company.
Do to get people.
And that's one of the reasons, Mayor, why we went and we looked at the Greenville facility and we looked at what they have on campus. I mean, they have some great plans that they spent, how many years they said? They were 20 or 30 years?
Yeah, it was...
The one guy had worked there for 30-some years and he'd been thinking about this, and that helped them build this project, and it took them that long, but they have some really great facilities that we show up for, for meetings all the time at. So I think, I think we have something that, the difference for us is not just the utility in the building, it's gonna be the utility in the Uptown concept that's really gonna give us something that's, that you see in some of the larger communities in the country where if you're downtown Dallas, you go to the conference center and then you matriculate downtown, whereas Rocky Mount, unfortunately, you go to the conference, you stay in there, and then you drive away, whereas you can't, you don't have as many amenities there, but here you would have it. You know, Winston-Salem's got a kind of a nice layout that you could go downtown. So this just gives us something that hopefully will be unique for the experience.
Well, if you can bear with us for a few more minutes, Jason's next on deck here, and he's gonna talk about how this footprint now interacts. Thank you, Tessa.
Yeah, thank you.
He's gonna talk about how this new footprint interacts with the master plan that Council of West last... that the council blessed last year. The good news is, is that it works. At least we feel it does, hopefully you do, too.
Great, yeah, thank you, Anthony. Yeah, so as Anthony mentioned earlier, when we first met about a year ago, we assumed about 125,000 square feet for the Sports and Events Center. That's grown considerably, so we had to adjust the site to match both the building size and the dimensions, but also some additional parking. But we felt like we landed well, at a really good place with the last master plan, so we didn't want to reinvent the wheel. We just wanted to adjust it, make some improvements, and just some tweaks here and there, just to make sure it worked. So really excited to share with you guys what we've done over the last few months. So this is a refresher, this was our, Matt previously approved development plan. The way we've set this up is really kind of in different pods and different areas, starting with some townhomes, adjacent to the single-family residential, that's a nice transition zone, going from one type of residential use to another. It's a really nice transition between the two. As you come through the townhomes, you make your way towards the uptown, the commercial core, and the Sports and Events Center. So those two uses are working together, serving both the athletic and event uses, and then the complementary restaurants, bars, and some residential uses there as well. We also had the commercial entertainment area dedicated, just there on the south side of the site, that's also to complement what's going on at Sports Events Center for families who aren't there the whole time, they want to go somewhere else and be entertained, and not have to, you know, drive too far away.
And that's right there is where Michael's going to recruit Topgolf to go, from the water park, right? Right, Michael?
Absolutely.
And then we have the amphitheater, kind of along the river, and then to the north of that, the outdoor tournament space. So this is where we landed about a year ago, and then, as I mentioned, we made a few adjustments. So overall, the scheme stays the same. We still have the townhomes as that transition zone from the single-family. The commercial recreation use is still on the site. We still have the uptown core, right in the middle of the space, Sports and Events Center works, and then the amphitheater and outdoor tournament area has generally stayed the same between the two layouts. So got a few zoom-ins on these, so we'll kind of walk through some of the changes in a little bit more detail. So the first change is we revised our entry road alignment. On the previously approved plan, we had a rather large roundabout there, that was done to create a sense of entry and approach into the development, but it really wasn't serving much of a, of a function outside of that. So we've realigned that entryway. We still have driveways on and off of this, but this helps the traffic flow. We've been working closely with VHB on some traffic studies on this, so we're just kind of fine tuning that entryway approach.
There's a school going in there, right?
Yes.
So is that calculated into that?
Yes.
Yep. And we're looking at this area here, where you see a pond, that's the area we'll be looking to kind of create a gateway feature, a gateway, a sense of arrival as you come into the site. So just kind of reorganizing that idea in a different form. Next, we've increased the size of the residential area, so moving the townhomes also across the road and inside a couple of small ponds there, so residential has increased. The commercial recreation area has grown, it's now right around 16 acres, that should give a nice flexibility for Topgolf, for several different uses that could go in that space. Really felt like that area needed to grow a little bit in order to give that use flexibility, and to make it a little bit, relate a little, relate a little bit better to the Sports and Events Center. All right, as we move in here to this commercial core and the Sports and Events Center, on the previous plan, we had two main avenues that came through the site, kind of north to south, with the main street going east and west. We were able to keep the main street going east and west, but we had to go into one single avenue going north to south. So that's simplify some of the, some of the vehicular movement throughout the area, but generally, it's, it's very close, about the same size, we still have the same number of uses, and we've also added some more parking. So overall, I feel like this was a nice move.
One addition that we made here, initially, there was not a roadway connection behind the facility. That's going to be required anyways, from a fire code perspective. So what we've done is, we've integrated it into this site plan to help disperse some of the traffic, get people to various parking areas and destinations without just having to be on that main street.
Absolutely. And there you can see the entry plaza that we talked about earlier with, with Tessa and her team at LS3P. We're still refining that, just trying to figure out exactly what that is, but that does create a nice entryway into the Sports and Events Center. As we move, just a little bit further north here, this area where it says 260 spaces, that was reserved for just overflow, grass parking on the previously developed master plan. We've now reorganized that to create some commercial uses and some residential uses. The idea being, that's now going to activate the space behind the Sports and Events Center, so you get people moving all over the site, not just in small little areas. So the idea is to also draw people through from the events center and create a better connection to the outdoor field tournament area on the other side of that stream.
So we could go back. Thank you, thank you, Jason. So I think one thing that's important to understand here is that our planning recognizes that the mixed-use development is not going to be there on day one of opening the Sports and Events Center, right? So we're not going to have all that structured parking in place. We have a transition plan in place that basically says we're going to start off with surface parking here, 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 and here, and as those lots are sold off for whatever type of development, then the structured parking would come as part of that. So just wanted to make sure that we've, that you're aware that we've thought about how this will grow over time, it's not just going to plop down.
So what parking space would be out the gate? The 265 and 100, I'm sitting on the left side, is that going to be enough if you have 4,000 people in there?
It's going to look a lot different than what this is. So many of these blocks, like where you see the 260, you know, that's essentially going to start off as surface parking, likely not paved, but surface parking. Same thing, you can see the 265 spaces below the sports center. All of that is going to be parking before any additional buildings are constructed. And then where you see 400 spaces there, that's likely to be surface parking as well. So there's going to be lots of open surface parking until the development actually occurs.
Do we consider parking garages?
That's part, in fact, what you're looking at, Mr. Warden, you see the 400, the 260?
Yes.
That's structured parking capacity.
Okay.
So at full buildout, that's the amount of parking deck capacity we expect.
And we looked at those two and South Myrtle area to their development, their area that they have, where Tessa's office is located, it's got a great uptown complex, but these parking garages that are not massive, multi-layered, they're, this size, really fit into that overall complex. They're not, they don't dominate the facility, they complement everything else that's around, so it has a really good design structure, and that's where it comes into, to how it works when you have that buildout.
Makes them more affordable, and also distributes some of that parking, so not everybody's trying to go to one spot. So just some good site planning there. All right, to wrap it up, here's the schedule. Concept design is what you saw today. If you're okay with the proposal, and you're ready for us to continue moving forward, we will certainly do that. And our goal is to get to that schematic design in April. That's where we're going to start talking about cost and execution, okay? In between there, we just received four proposals for a management company that would come in and actually operate the facility. We'll put that RFP out before Christmas, and we're going to hopefully bring those recommendations back to you in March. We want them to be on board before we finish the design, so they can advise, and then help us plan the facility as it moves towards opening. We've got some rezoning stuff to work on, Ryan's going to lead that up, it's going to start very soon. And then, when we talked about revenue recovery last time, this multifamily RFP and the recreation amenities RFP, those are some really great opportunities for us. So once we finish the zoning piece, once we get that schematic design, and really have something to showcase, we're going to start chasing those opportunities and hopefully pump some additional resources into the project.
And we're going to have some design input on those multifamilies, or not, it's going to be a free fall?
Yes, absolutely. Yes. So the city council will be able to input on that with the Plan Unit Development Design Approval, or the Plan Unit Development Approval. But then through the RFP as well, we'll be able to stipulate exactly what we're looking for.
Also look at the lifespan of something like that, too, as far as being able to enforce it, any kind of covenants or what have you.
Right.
In there, because you don't want to start, start looking hodgepodge after 15 or 20 years.
And the best part about that PUD process is, that has to be approved and considered by the council, so you control that final approval. And then during the development process, just imagine how Ryan walked us through the options of detention pond fencing. We'll have a similar type of discussion, but it's a lot more complex and involved. So we'll, we'll go through that, and then when you approve that PUD, any changes, like you were talking about, Mayor, any changes that a developer would want to do on those properties, has to come back through to be considered by council. Doesn't have a staff, a staff consideration on a, on a PUD approval. That's why it's so important for us to get it moving now, and then it's also why we can't have the multifamily RFP or the recreation RFP. What we're doing, we're doing the same kind of site readiness that we have for Project Frontier, so that when the developer comes in, that work's already completed. There's no question about where they can locate and what those restrictions are, and then when they have to look at their infrastructure, we'll be able to partner with them and bring that back to council to consider in terms of those, the package that we could do for selling land and being a part of that development.
And as far as tenants or people moving in, we have much control over that, as far as what kind of businesses can go in there.
Yes.
Is that going to be written into the zoning code?
That's exactly right.
I mean, think about smoke shops and tattoo parlors and that sort of thing.
The city council has full control over all of that, that's the best part of the Plan Unit Development. So, you know, you're not going to prohibit things, you're only going to allow certain things. And that's why Ryan has taken the lead on that, because he knows that in and out, you can make some good recommendations for us. Before we move on, what I hope you appreciate out of this slide right here is that we're not doing things sequentially, we're nesting all of this work together. Our goal is to be ready to go to bid later this year, if all goes according to plan.
That's very exciting.
This is not, this is not a 10-year plan, this is like a 10-month plan.
Now, one thing we didn't bring up was those rectangle fields, is that not part of this at all?
That's part of the process.
It is, we didn't discuss it, that's why.
Well, we focused so much on building itself, because that's the.
I didn't know if that was getting pushed way down, or that is part of all the.
Absolutely.
That's your major goal.
Still up there.
The concept does not work without those tournaments.
Correct, okay, just want to make sure.
Absolutely. So, Mayor, that was a 20-minute presentation that turned to an hour and five. Well, I hope it was time well spent, and that you can appreciate the amount of work that's gone into it. Thank you so much for the great questions, too. If all's good, we're going to keep marching.
Keep on marching.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, because of how much time we took with the last presentation, and very well worth it, I'm going to try to go through this very quickly, okay? Thank you very much. So we're going to talk about the Trade Street Extension, and to emphasize the importance of this project, we've got to go back in time. I think many of us, particularly those on the Transportation Advisory Committee, remember years ago when DOT had four projects labeled U4007. There's A, B, C, and D section, okay? A is West Huff Drive, which is open, B is Jacksonville Parkway, which is open, C and D were to build great separated interchanges at Western and Marine and Piney Green and Marine, okay? To give you some context as what that looks like, you can see the various labels of the landmarks. Marine is going, I guess, southwest, northeast, and then the opposite is Western. So you see Walmart on the corner, Texas Roadhouse, I think we all know where we are. The yellow area is the overall footprint of that project, okay? So not only is it, would it impact the number of businesses physically, right, the yellow area also represents where all driveways would be removed, okay? So this is 4007C, but it continues along the Marine Boulevard corridor, and I've switched up the orientation. Marine Boulevard goes east-west, Piney Green Road connects from the south, and then you see Drummer, Kellum, and Empire Boulevard. The previous project in $2,010 was about $85 million, okay? Now, you think about where we were in 2010 versus where we were today, two-thirds of that project cost was right-of-way acquisition. This one in 2010 was well over $100 million. So again, think about where we are today. And then, not to mention, just the overall impact on the existing commercial core at Jacksonville, as well as the next Frontier, if you will, going out 17 north. So in 2013, 14, 15, somewhere around in there, we proposed to the DOT an alternate plan, okay, and it had multiple different components to it. We didn't like the overall impact and the cost of those two projects, so we wanted to do something different. They said, prove to me it's going to work, and we'll go with you, okay? So, and again, quickly here, we wanted to address regional traffic, but we also wanted to address local traffic, because Marine and Western and Marine and Piney Green, they deal with both, okay? So from a regional perspective, we developed a project that would improve the Jacksonville Parkway and Marine Boulevard intersection, which is the green circle there, right above where it says bypass. As you know, today, you can't go in all directions with that interchange, and it really limits the functionality, and also pushes a bunch of trips over to the Marine and Western intersection. Also wanted to improve Western and Gateway North, which is the one right above Western, and then build the Parkway extension, which essentially completes the bypass, if you will, okay? So from a regional perspective, someone wanting to head north towards New Bern doesn't have to go through Marine and Western and Marine and Piney Green with those facilities in place, okay? To handle local traffic, we proposed the Trade Street Extension, which would extend from Western to McDaniel, kind of behind the old Walmart, as well as the Commerce Road Extension, which is in place today, and it functions very, very well. We also proposed a widening of Western and Marine, so instead of, you know, an overpass and all the ramps and everything, just widen the intersection as it is, get out as much capacity as you can, and then same at, at, goodness gracious, I just lost it, McDaniel and Workshop and Marine as well, okay? So all of these together were intended to handle regional as well as local traffic. The modeling showed that it worked, and DOT said, okay, that's the direction we're going to go. Much less impactful, much lower cost, but at the same time, it also opened up a number of areas for economic development. So you think about the Commerce Extension, the Parkway Extension, and the Trade Street Extension, those are new routes that have available property for development, okay? So all of these are currently on the Transportation Improvement Program, and I'm not going to go through all of them, but this year, Western and Gateway North is going to be widened, okay? Shortly after that, the Parkway Interchange, same year, of course, is the Trade Street Extension, the Parkway Extension in '29, and then you can see the rest. But the good thing is, they're on the program, most of these are committed and moving forward with design towards construction.
Doesn't necessarily mean that's what is going to happen.
Well, yes, sir.
We have.
Well, is there anything in the path of this tornado that's going to, I mean, how many businesses do you think are going to be impacted?
By the interchange?
Yeah.
Oh, there would be hundreds of them. But the point is, is that because the DOT accepted this alternate plan, and I wasn't specific on this, because they accepted this, those two interchanges are no longer on the table.
So that saves some.
That saves all of them.
Saves all of them.
Yeah, and I think. Yeah, and I think the leadership of the Transportation Advisory Committee in identifying that and saying, hey guys, we don't like it, we want to find something different, you know, I think that was immense. And then, of course, DOT backing off what was a pretty firm position to go with this, you know, it's just a great accomplishment. So, again, Trade Street's here for implementation in '29. I'm going to show you what it looks like here. Again, I mentioned that it goes behind the old Walmart at Marine and Western. Western's bottom left, Marine's bottom right, you can see McDaniel. Right now, in the center, you can see we have those old stormwater ponds. They're very problematic, we've got challenges with vigorancy back in there, and it doesn't really look good either. So if the project was constructed, this is what it would look like. The ponds would be reconfigured, the roadway would be extended, very similar to what the road looks like with the Commerce Extension that was just finished. It would tie into what's called Penny Lane right there at Candlewood Suites, and then there would be a traffic signal at McDaniel.
That's already a busy little street as it is.
Well, it is, even though there are 100 speed bumps back there, right?
That traffic fills up right there.
So it shows you that there's already demand, right? Even though the roadway isn't intended to handle that traffic.
So you're going to have, so there's going to be a red light. You said that's going to be Penny Road and McDaniel?
So the end of the black line.
This, this right here, if you can see the cursor, that's Penny Lane. That will be just a stop sign.
Right.
This over here...
That's going to be a red light.
That's going to be a traffic.
Plus your traffic signal at Marine Boulevard and McDaniel.
Right.
So you're having two traffic signals within...
Two blocks.
But that's the same way it is on the other end, where Walmart and Hardee's are. It's the same road.
Oh, yeah.
Distance.
Oh, yeah.
The benefit that we have, of course, is our traffic signal system that allows us to coordinate all of this. And if you recall, there was another widening project down here at McDaniel and Marine that's going to hopefully alleviate some of that congestion. So, you know, the modeling shows, and I feel very confident that we're going to be able to manage it. Now, there will be traffic, particularly after school lets out, there's just no way around that. But I feel pretty strongly that it will function well.
Go back a couple of slices, Ken, if you can.
This one?
No, to the little diagram there you got right there. So the Parkway will cross there.
The Parkway Extension?
Yeah.
So the Parkway is going to cross over Western.
Cross it, cross it.
Mm-hmm.
Five.
No, not at this point. It's going to be a surface intersection until an interchange is warranted, which is not anytime in the near future based upon the traffic volumes.
That will ease a lot.
Absolutely. So this Parkway Extension is going to look just like the Parkway itself, which is a pretty efficient road. And it's going to extend all the way north of Jacksonville. I can't give you a really good terminus, but it'll be north of Wolf Swamp somewhere.
Do you have a satellite picture of that or no?
No, sir.
Can you get us one?
Absolutely, yeah, of course.
I'm just worried about that Trade Street, all bottlenecks and then McDaniel, I feel that's going to be a kind of congestor right there. I mean, it already is. And people are going to try to go right and then go left at the light, and then people cut back through there all the time as it is.
Instead of snaking between Walmart and the pond, they'll have a road that actually will let it move better.
I'm worried about all the traffic behind Walmart, there's just already a ton as it is, I don't know if...
It's only one way, there's a, when you go, you could go from Western heading over toward McDaniel, you're stopped right there. You've got to go to, you're supposed to turn left to go to Best Buy or Dick's. So, you know, you can't, it tells you you can't go through there.
Yeah.
The whole concept here is distributing local traffic rather than concentrating it. You know, we're not going to get rid of the trips, that's for sure.
Because it's spreading it out.
But we're spreading it.
I can imagine the pressure we'll take off of Western Boulevard.
Yeah, and Marine.
Western's terrible.
We're doing the interconnectivity too.
Absolutely.
So think about Western Boulevard Extension, where we have those baggage roads that function so well and take, well, they function, let's just say that. Some better than others, but they take a lot of pressure off of Western. This is the exact same concept, just for Marine Boulevard.
Think about Brabston over there behind First Bank that runs between...
Yeah, Brabham?
Brabham, yep. That runs between Marine Federal, you know, and that, how that parallel road there, you know, lots of traffic moves there, going in and out of Publix and everything else. And that's the concept, you want to have as many of those as you can. And that's what Congress does on the other side, now that it connects all the way up to Piney Green.
Ease the travel and it'll cut down on accidents, I'm sure.
It will, and it's also...
Fewer driver cuts.
This project is intended to do several things. First of all, provide that interconnectivity. Resolve some of the challenges that we have with those stormwater ponds, because they don't function well, they're not compliant, okay? And then...
They're individual, and one of them's Walmart, and one of them's, they all support individual developments there. And so they're under the ownership of those property owners. And that's what the next real issue is, is we're going to need to consolidate.
There's a tangled web of stormwater permitting back there, that's the best way that I can describe it, okay? But again, you know, it's going to function better, it's going to look better, and the intent too is to add some capacity here so that if some of these parcels were to develop, so you think about right here behind the old Hardee's, this over here at the Affordable Suites, you know, there would be some capacity in that facility to handle it. But the challenge, like Mr. Massey said, was stormwater permits. Yes, ma'am?
Can you go back to that slide?
Sure.
Mr. Friends. So where that new red light is proposed, if you keep going on McDaniel, isn't there a speed bump? Would that speed bump be flattened?
Lots of speed bump.
Yeah, the speed bump is a little bit further north here.
It's going into residential area.
Is that going to be flattened on that road now?
That's not part of the plan, but it's something that can be looked at.
You're not going to be going very fast.
Right.
Not on that road.
Well, that's good, right? Yeah, I mean, that's good, that's the intent of the speed bump. The purpose of this project really isn't to increase speed, it's just to provide more choices for getting around.
Whether or not it's going to be slowed down, because your speed limit is not... And then you still have the hotel that's on that road, you're going into Foxhorn subdivision...
You know, the people go, well, you know, the people are shopping in those stores, you know, and the thing is, it's not that Trade Street is a cut-through, you know, it's for people that are trying to get to those commercial things and people trying to get out, and just like we talked about, the options aren't connected. They've got that blacked-out area between some of them, so what you do is get better circulation around all the existing commercial facilities.
On a road that's designed to handle it.
Yep, yeah. So it's really cleaning up what's kind of a convoluted situation, and it's not intended to be a throughway.
Right. So these are low-speed facilities, they're all intended to be 25, 35 mile per hour roads. The other benefit of the signal is we get some signalized pedestrian crossings out there. Now, whether people use them or not, but, you know, there are a lot of folks that cross the road.
They have sidewalks.
That cross the road 20 paces from a corner, 20 steps, and they'll cut through traffic on a major, like 17, on Marine.
Well, see, that's one of the reasons why they're cutting that way anyway, because when you're trying to get out of Walmart over there by Golden Corral, I mean, it's like a booger bear trying to make that right-hand turn, hoping that you can beat the traffic light, otherwise...
That's why this road is...
Yeah, you're going to be there a while, yeah.
So to get to the request here, DOT is challenged in navigating the stormwater permits, but Pat is not, okay? Pat has already figured out a way that we can navigate untangling the stormwater permits. However, DOT does not acquire right-of-way, does not acquire stormwater ponds, period, okay? So in order to make this happen, we would have to assist them with acquiring the right-of-way. And then, long-term, we would also have to talk about, once the new ponds are constructed, what does maintenance look like? So we don't have answers to all those questions right now, but the big question that I have for council is, are we interested in looking at this a little bit closer? Do we see the value of the road? And if so, what we would do is we would work with DOT's consultant, who does the right-of-way acquisition, to find out what our options are, what our potential cost might be. And so we would just kind of step our way through the decision-making process rather than jumping in.
Certainly don't want to go back to those ugly yellow diagrams that take everybody's driveway and businesses out and down, so I think it's definitely worth pursuing.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, so we're going to talk a little bit about her contract with attorney.
Yes, sir. Mayor, I handed out the copy of the contract. So on December 31st of last year, Mr. Carter retired as the city attorney. City Council hired the Mercer Group to help us in the recruitment and navigating the process. Council reviewed those applications, you selected the top two candidates to interview. City Council selected Ms. Lorna Welch as our top candidate and asked staff to move forward in pulling together the employment agreement. Interim City Attorney Frances Raspberry worked with staff to update that employment agreement, used the items that council directed us to at the last council meeting. We put those in there, we sent that back to Ms. Welch. She reviewed the document and she accepted the terms of employment. She has signed the document, showing her acceptance. She is ready to begin work with the city if the city council considers and approves this document. City Council does have funds allocated within FY '25 current budget to pay for Ms. Welch to join our team.
Page... This is the document she signed.
Yes, sir.
Page six. In the section of work, Section 8 Work Schedule, Soul Employment, Testory Time. All right. First off, there's a type of there that says the employee shall not directly or indirectly render any services of illegal. Should that not be any services?
Yes, sir.
Down at B, all right, exempt from provisions of the city's personnel or human resources policies applicable to the position classified hourly employees, classified hourly employees of the employer. Is this dealing with FLSA, is that what that's...
Yes, sir, so this goes back to exempt status.
She's not exempt, is that what that's basically saying?
Well, she's still operating as an exempt employee.
She is.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, there was one other thing too. So she's getting 80 hours up front vacation, is that what that's...
That's the, yes, sir. And then back to Mr. Bittner's question before, then the standard accrual as provided in the policy thereto for, and the same thing on vacation, standard accrual per personnel policy. If approved, Mayor, then our target start date is the second week of March. That would provide Ms. Welch the opportunity to work out her notice with her current employer and to help him transition at a minimum, and then to get to work.
So she's coming on?
Not in particular, Sheriff. Employer is not the mayor, employer is the city of Jacksonville, city council.
What section are you at, Mr. Bittner? Is that the first?
Section 19.
Just trying to word Mayor, I guess. Oh, for notices?
Well, the city attorney serves under the pleasure of the town council, city council.
Yes.
So if she were to tender a resignation, it would be, I think, appropriate to tender to you versus the manager, at least in my experience with other managers, that's how it's been done. I think that's a traditional designation.
I had a question. Under Section 6 with regards to salary, so her start date is what again?
Tentatively, it's the second week of March 17th.
So March 17th. And considering our fiscal year ends June 30th, and the new fiscal year begins one July, would this make her eligible for a pay increase only three months after being employed?
Typically, no, based on our personnel policy. So the personnel policy says that employee has to be here for, well...
Six months.
Six months. And so if we schedule the attorney and the manager evaluation for the end of July or August, as we've done before, then that's before be eligible for the increase.
It's not a very big...
No.
Good.
Window for what? Sorry, I didn't understand.
Yeah, 23 months.
Right, and so even here, we could say that that evaluation is not done until the next year. And that's kind of how you tend to skip me. If we can clarify that with her.
There's some language in there addressing, I think, that, sorry. In 6B, the review should be by council annually, and any change, increase, I think probably should be of consideration, shall be made at the time as similar consideration given to other employees. I would interpret that to mean other management-level employees, manager, assistant manager, so when you do those, I think you could rotate her into that schedule, if there is a schedule for those kind of, that tier of employee. And also says, or at the council's discretion at the conclusion of the performance evaluation, in accordance with Section 7. So there is that discretion of the council, I think you can rotate her, not have to look at it at the beginning of the fiscal year, you can rotate her until, kind of push it off until she falls into the next regular cycle.
And we can clarify that with her, Mayor.
Yeah. I think it's built in there, but it's probably a good point to clarify in discussions with her, if that's a concern.
Yeah, we would make it very clear, Mayor.
Anybody else have anything?
All the things we previously discussed appear to be addressed.
Yes, ma'am.
Is finance considered a preautocertification?
I'm sorry, what?
Are you financed, you're smiling, something.
Yeah, it came up today, and we, it should be on there, but we, after the last page...
Sure. Standard LGC recommended length. I thought about it, but the clerk also tipped me off to it, so I'll make sure I got it. Credit to both of you.
So we would ask, Mayor, if you consider that, it would be with those changes, and then we would get you the final document with the changes before you sign, and we'll also go back to Ms. Welch to make sure she understands those ads. And then if we need to have her re-sign, then we would have her re-sign, but we want to make the final edits.
Why don't you do that? Take a final copy and have her sign it again.
I have a whole set of final versions.
Yeah, we'll do that before.
Discussion.
She's out of town this week, Mayor, and we told her that we would present tonight, and if council goes that, we would have her sign before we give you the copy with those edits. If you're good with it?
So we've approved the contract with changes?
If you approve it with the changes, that's what we'll do.
So moved.
Yeah, second.
I've got one city moment. You're good? So we have one, one city moment that we are presenting to you, and that comes from this past Sunday. We had our Jacksonville Recreation Team present our African-American read-in. Very exciting, strong picture here. You're going to see our after-school youth being a part of the program. They shared poems, quotes, inspiration from Black artists in celebration of Black History Month. Part of what they, part of what they presented this year are a sketch of Ruby Bridges, who was the first Black student to attend a white school during desegregation in New Orleans. So you'll see part of their presentation. It's a big event for our recreation team and for our community because we're bringing in our students to be active. I think this is where you see where the city can be a strong partner in the educational process. A lot of times, we focus on what we do in a recreational field, but this is in a, in an active educational assistance type of program. And this is how our after-school and before-school programs work. They try and implement some of these things. As you can see, Dr. Washington is present for the read-in, and Jamia had played a huge role in establishing the whole program. Annually, we've taken a lot of pride, and it continues to grow and be an awesome event for not only us, but for the community. A very exciting use of Jack Emmett for our program. That's all we have, mayor.
All right. Everybody else? How about a motion to adjourn?
If you don't want them, we'll take them.